Could we, do we have a quorum, I guess? Would you call the roll?
Sure. Greg Wolf.
Here.
David Paderis.
Here.
Kelly Rouse.
Present.
Brad Miller is absent. Lindsay Crisay is absent. Fred Sterrett.
Here.
Steve McGanck.
Here.
Tim Orick. Leslie Hind.
Present.
Craig Connell.
Here.
Andrew Logan.
Present via Zoom.
And Kevin Hogan is absent. I'll go ahead with the hybrid statement.
I believe you said that we need, what, six for a quorum?
We do have quorum.
We have a quorum, thank you. All right, Jay, would you like to say, make some introductions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just give me a couple of minutes liberty here. I wanted to introduce a new staff person that's working with us this evening. This is Chris Grunwall, is sitting right behind me. Chris is the new Deputy Director of Legal Services. So you all will be seeing Chris quite a bit at our future meetings and for not only this body, but also the zoning boards as well. He didn't come from too far away, the city of Alatha, so just right down the street. But we're glad to have him, so I think he'll have a great impact in our department.
Well, thank you and welcome. Right, next, public comment. Do we have any public comment this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to disclosure of conflict of interest and ex parte communications by any member. Does anyone have anything they want to disclose?
Mr. Chair, one thing I believe Liz still does, she needs to read the Zoom statement.
Oh.
Sorry, I guess I kind of, when I jumped ahead, they kind of threw everything off a little bit.
Okay. It's all right.
That's okay.
This meeting is now being recorded in the board hearing room with planning commissioner members attending in person. There's an option for virtual attendance on Zoom webinar. For Zoom participants wishing to speak, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app at the start of the agenda item on which you desire to comment. Comments will be received from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. When it is your turn to speak, the moderator will recognize you by name and the number or phone number used to join the Zoom webinar, and your microphone will be unmuted. Please state your name and city and state where you reside for the record, followed by your comments. All public speakers will be limited to two minutes unless the chair designates a different time period. If you have trouble with Zoom, please call 913-715-9666. Board members, staff, and presenters, please state your name every time you begin talking, and please speak into the microphone so that people attending via Zoom can hear you, and the comments can be just transcribed for the record. This is a public meeting, we are presenting live and recording the meeting. Thank you.
All right, so this is Acting Chair Fred Sterrett again. I believe next we would have the agenda, which you should all have had an opportunity to review. Do we have any additions or deletions to that from staff or from any of the commissioners? Okay. Next is approval of the February 25, 2025 minutes. Takes a little while to read those, that was a pretty, pretty big, big meeting.
Mr. Chair, this is Greg Wolf, I move to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Steve McGanck with second. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Sorry, all opposed, same sign? Uh, okay. Zoning, I think Sean wanted to say something before we get into the zoning regulations update.
How about this? All right, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners Sean Pendley with County Planning Staff. I wanted to provide a quick introduction. You recall, we started this update for our zoning and subdivision regulations last fall. We have been working on this very ambitious project that what we're doing is updating the entire zoning and subdivision regulations, and that is a considerable task and does involve a lot of work. We have been engaged with meetings with stakeholders and different public groups, development, developer stakeholders, and, and of course, also, we are working with a consultant group, Clarion Associates and Olson, who are assisting us with this update. It is a considerable update, so we do appreciate their expertise in this. And as you recall, we've had a few updates on this. We have also been working with our advisory committee that has representatives from the planning commission, zoning boards, and other county stakeholders. And we happen to have a meeting tomorrow, we'll, we'll talk about that. But I just wanted to give a quick introduction to this update and turn it over to Elizabeth Garvin with Clarion Associates. But I also wanted to mention, too, the advisory committee members have received an executive summary for this first module that we're going to be talking about this evening, but the rest of the planning commissioners hadn't received this in advance, so we did want to provide hard copies for the full planning commission, so you've got this. And this will be posted on the planning commission website as well. It's just an executive summary. We haven't completed the full draft of this first module yet, but we're working with Clarion Associates to get this updated, and Elizabeth will give that overview. And then at the end of this evening's presentation will be available for questions for staff and the consultants. So with that, I'll turn it over to Elizabeth Garvin with the presentation for Module One.
Yay. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Elizabeth Garvin, I'm with Clarion Associates. We are part of the consulting team that the county has hired to help update the zoning and subdivision regulations. I am going to give you a fairly short presentation tonight in the history of presentations, and it's intended as an overview of the draft that you'll be seeing as soon as we finish up polishing the last few details out with staff. So we want to let you know what's coming your way. The executive summary summarizes pretty much the same information, but we have added pretty pictures to the PowerPoint, so we hope that is enticing. I think we'll go through the PowerPoint and then stop for questions at the end, if that's okay? If you are just really anxious to ask a question in the middle, do say so. Okay, so this evening, we're gonna, let me see if I can scoot this up out of the way. No, maybe? I think, I put it up in the corner, that might be a safe place for it. Okay, we're going to do a project update, talk about Module One, which is our first chunk of code that we've put together for county review, talk about our scheduling next steps, and then go through questions, should you have any. Oh, good, I can watch myself do this, it gets better. So what's our project update? If you remember, we have a series of goals about the zoning and subdivision regulation update. First and foremost is implementing the Johnson County Rural Comprehensive Plan. All parts of the plan, the updates that you've done in the past few years, making sure that the code aligns with the plan and implements the plan. Apart from that, we're looking to improve user friendliness. We want people who use the code within the county to be able to make sense of what's going on in it. This helps the users and it helps staff. It tends to reduce the number of phone calls with people asking questions that the code itself could possibly answer. Skipping through the list, we are looking to make the code more predictable, the outcomes more predictable, and the standards more flexible, which are two things that go together. One is in how we write the standards, and the other is in how we write the processes. So we'll come back to those as we go through the update. And then finally, we're looking to reduce regulatory conflicts and inconsistencies. The code has aged, kind of as we all have, and some pieces have been added and some pieces have been changed. And it's nice to do a front-to-back rewrite to make sure that you're reading the code during this process and that it all works together for a period of time. So we're setting it up also so that staff in the county can amend it over time without creating conflicts or inconsistencies, to the extent possible. So here's our project schedule. It's divided into four phases. We've finished Phase One and Phase Two, so getting the project started and doing the zoning regulations assessment. We are now drafting the updated code. You can see our timeframe in here is March to September of this year. It's a fairly short drafting timeframe, but if you recall from earlier presentation, we are drafting the whole code first and then spending a lot of time with the public afterwards. We want to let everyone review all the pieces of the code, it helps make more sense of it. Having said that, we will do some targeted outreach this summer, and I will talk about that closer to the end of the presentation. Just to give you a progress update, in case anyone stops you in the grocery store and asks about the zoning regulations update, which is, I'm sure, something that happens, we've just about finished, as Sean said, drafting Module One. So this is the zoning districts and the uses update. This is what we consider the core of the code or the DNA of the code, and the rest of the code hangs on the districts and the uses, so we want to make sure that we spend our time getting this information correct, and then the rest follows. We have started drafting Module Two. This is the second chunk of the code, and it will have development standards in it. So this will have parking and lighting, any sort of environmentally sensitive land standards, those will all be in that section. And then the last section will be procedures. We, recent meetings, we have been working on drafting, so we haven't had a ton of meetings. We will meet with advisory committee tomorrow, as Sean said, and then we have some upcoming community engagement, we'll be working with Olson to do that, and I've got some information about that on the last slide. Okay, so in Module One, we have three kinds of zoning districts. We have base zoning districts, so if you're thinking in comparison to the current code, these are non-planned districts. These are just base districts. You get zoned and you develop according to the zoning of that district. We have a couple special zoning districts, they're new, and I will describe them to you this evening. And then we have three overlay zoning districts, two existing, the airport and the floodplain, and then a new planned development overlay. We're going to change up how the county does planned development, and we'll talk about that this evening. We have a consolidated table of allowed uses, some use-specific standards, so those are standards that apply to a use when it's allowed in a district, and then updated measurements and definitions. So backing up to where I started, what's, what's an important goal for this project? Implementing the Johnson County Rural Comprehensive Plan. So you may remember, the plan has three basic policy areas. There's the rural, rural policy area, the rural traditional policy area, and the urban fringe area. And so in each of these areas, the plan calls for slightly different types of development. To get to slightly different types of development, we want to make sure that the zoning districts allowed in the policy areas speak to the type of development that's allowed there, and don't allow development that really shouldn't be allowed in those policy areas. As we move from the kind of very general, broad policy areas, and those are mapped, into the specific goals that the county wants to see within the plan, we start looking at how the zoning districts, the uses and the whole code itself will help implement creating a sense of community and rural character, or making sure that public facilities and services are available. So we try to weave these pieces back into the regulations, and that's how we kind of take that large policy level comprehensive plan and bring it down to the regulatory level of the zoning and subdivision regulations. So to go into the update of the zoning districts themselves, here's a chart that you'll find in the draft regulations, and it's showing you how we are starting with a list of existing zoning districts, and we are making recommendations to consolidate some of these districts. So we do this consolidation as kind of a next step in what's happened under the current code. The current zoning districts have been in place for a while. The county has learned what is working, what isn't. The development community makes requests about rezoning to districts that they find accommodate the type of development that they are planning to build. And so looking at how the existing districts have been used over time, and what changes have been made to them over time, gives us an overview of what's working and what isn't quite hitting the mark. So working with staff, we have made some recommendations about either carrying districts forward. So as you can see, like for the existing rural district, we're recommending just carrying it forward, so it will go from rural to rural district. There's not a huge change, and the standards will be the same. But you'll also see, as you look through this table, that some of the districts have been consolidated. So we've taken the rural low density, I mean, the residential low density and the planned residential low density, and said, we don't need two districts for this, we can do it in one. We can consolidate, have fewer districts, but expand some of the uses and dimensions that can take place in those districts, so that the code is kind of doing a little more work in broader categories, and we don't have to work within the narrower categories of the existing districts. So this is, just for your impromptu zoning history lesson, this is a change that many communities are seeing these days. There was a point in time, in the late eighties, early nineties, I think particularly when Kansas reformed the planning statutes and said, you can do planned zoning, that a lot of communities jumped in and said, okay, we're going to have a long list of districts, and they're going to do specific things, and this is how we want them to work. And what communities are finding in retrospect is that some of it worked really well, and some of it didn't work as well, so we can take what we've learned from that and move it forward. You'll see on that third column, as you're looking at this, what the minimum lot sizes are for these districts. That is certainly not the only dimension in the districts, but it helps give you a sense of how they can spread out across the county. So we have a couple of minimum lot size, 10 acres, one has an asterisk, asterisk, sorry, and that means that that could be adjusted based on other information that we don't have in the table here. We have a three acre and a two acre. We're recommending a couple new districts. The residential lake, which is more specifically for Gardner Lake area, but might also be applicable in places where you want to switch that front setback and rear setback, because we have property more facing a lake than facing out or facing a street. And then we have proposed a residential townsite district. So this could be in some, some areas in the Blue Valley Plan area, where we do have some of the older, original town sites in the county, and their development took place on smaller lots than you're seeing now. The goal of adding these districts is to help make that development conforming. We don't want to put it on the property owners to say, well, you have 10,000 square feet in a district that requires four acres, and that's your problem. What we want to do is say, okay, we can adjust the code to recognize what's on the ground, we can make you conforming, and that helps you stay encouraged to invest in your property, and it helps you just, if you need to work through this code for some reason. So these are some of the changes we have going here. And then we're looking at a residential multiple family district, and still having a discussion, so that's what the TBD is about the lot size. So we're still working through, how do we balance lot sizes with that, with providing this choice in housing with the necessary infrastructure that has to go with it, and where can this take place? So that's residential districts. We are recommending retiring a set of districts, so these districts are mapped in the county. I believe everything we're retiring is mapped in the county, so it may have a property or two that is mapped. When we say retire, we mean like a send-off with a cake and a gold watch and some party, some balloons for everybody. Everyone who has zoned this, whose property is zoned in any of these districts, they will maintain their zoning. What we're saying is that other properties or developers can't choose these districts for rezoning. So they stay in place, the property stays conforming, but they are kind of retired over time. Some of them, over time, might be 20, 25 years. The goal is to keep those properties conforming, but not expand the use of these districts. The districts that we had on the previous slide will meet whatever was going on in the retired districts, so these can be taken off the books going forward. And I'm going to talk about that in a minute when we get to the zoning map, when we talk about that. So you'll see in this draft, a table of updated dimensional standards as we consolidate the districts. We look to also consolidating the dimensional standards. I will tell you, before, if anyone, you know, is diving in and looking at our setbacks or wants to talk to us about specifics on here, we are still finalizing some of the changes on here, and, you know, as we were going through it in preparation for this meeting, found a few things we still want to update, so by the time you get the draft, it may be a little bit different than this, but I think we're close here. So we create this table, this comparison table for the drafting process, and this allows you that look across the districts to see, you know, are we getting the right districts, doing the right things in the right location? Once we have decided that this table works, we typically take it out of the regulations, because for users, this is great and useful for staff, and we usually give staff a copy of this when it comes out, but for individual code users, they really want to know what's in the district that's applicable to their property. So this is for drafting purposes, and when you finally see the final draft, this will be gone, and this information will be moved into the individual districts. It'll look a little like this. So you'll see for each zoning district, there will be a purpose statement. This might be a combination of some of the purposes of districts that have been rolled together. It will certainly be updated to reflect the Rural Comprehensive Plan and any other applicable plans that we think might be working, that that district might work with. You'll see a graphic that shows roughly the scale of development in that district. So this is a rural district, there's really not going to be a lot of development. And then you'll see the dimensional table for that district. The dimensional table is keyed to the graphic, so there are, there are lines out of the graphic with letters attached to it, and that tells you what dimension is being measured in that location. You'll see when you get the draft, as you move into somewhat more intense development, there will be more going on the lot, on, on the lot. But, you know, keeping in mind that we are still basically doing, you know, rural or our very ex-urban kind of development, we're certainly not going to see, you know, lots of dense development, we're not going to see lots of height. That is not the change that the county's looking to make. So this will, this will be more of a gradual gradation over the districts. In the table, just looking at it, in, to tell you what's in here, we've got the lot standards, so those are the basic lot sizes. We have the setback requirements, to the extent that there are setback requirements, height requirements, and then exceptions. This is not everything related to dimensions, this is this particular district. There will also be some exceptions that exist in the code, and so that's why we're saying get the whole thing, because it will tell you, you know, hey, we can have an encroachment, or we can have extra height based on these circumstances, so that is in the code also. So that is kind of what the layout is. There's the change to the new districts, and then there is the look at the dimensions, and then we have a look at what the districts themselves look like coming back. So that was all residential. We look at commercial and employment. So you can see same pattern here. We're taking a look at what has worked in the county, where can we go to make it even more efficient than it is? What can we get out of the way? You know, to avoid conversations about a district that isn't going to do what it's supposed to do, or just to, you know, shrink the code. We don't need to have all of that information in there. So here we are on the left with a list of existing commercial unemployment districts, and here we are on the right with the new consolidated districts. So we're moving into two levels of commercial, two levels of employment, and then retiring some districts. You might see on the bottom that we are recommending retiring planned adult entertainment, which was also another fun throwback to the eighties and nineties, something every community did on the heels of some Supreme Court decisions and some lower court decisions about regulating adult uses. We are not going to make this change in a way that leaves the county open to becoming the next Reno, or whatever the future of that industry is, but we'll move this from its own zoning district into use-specific regulations. So it's not going away, and we're going to talk about this with a few things. Does it need to be a district, or can we do it as use regulations? Which means it could possibly, not for the planned adult entertainment, but for some other uses, could go in more districts, because we've set it up as use regulations. And we're going to have the reverse conversation, do we need a district for something that we're regulating with use regulations right now? And I'll come to that example in a minute. So here are the updates to the zoning districts in the commercial unemployment. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we are recommending two new special districts. One is called Community Facilities, and one is called Open Space and Parks, and I've got slides on those in a minute. And then we're carrying forward the city's airport vicinity overlay district. We will be making some changes within that, working with the airport and planning staff. We know that that district needs a little work, and so those are some conversations we have scheduled out in the future. Carrying forward the floodplain overlay zoning district, we will likely not make changes to that unless we're told by staff that there are changes the county wants to make. If I recall correctly, floodplain districts go through approval from the state in Kansas, linked to your insurance, and so that's usually not a place where we make significant changes. And then finally, the, the thing that I talked about earlier, we're recommending that the county move to base districts, special districts, overlay districts, and we're showing planned development as an overlay district. The way this works is fairly straightforward. You can take any of the base districts, so that would be any of the commercials or employments, or any of the residentials, and developer can propose, I would like to do a planned development. Planned development means that the developer wants to come in with some modifications to the dimensional standards, or perhaps some modifications to required site layout. It cannot be a wholesale departure from what is required in the base zoning district. So I think, as Karen asked me earlier, you know, if I have property that is zoned rural residential, I certainly cannot come in and develop it at residential lake densities. That's not the purpose of this, but it is to allow some flexibility in design. And the way it works just a little differently is that the applicant chooses the base district or districts, so if someone wanted to do mixed use, they could do residential and commercial. And those are the standards that they start with, and then they list the things they want to adjust. So staff and planning commission and board of county commissioners have a very clear comparison of what's there and what is proposed to be changed, and then the application goes through the approval process. So it's still a rezoning to do that, but we want to keep you very closely linked to the rest of the regulations, and starting with base districts does that. So maybe not a huge change, maybe a naming change and a slight process change, but it allows us to do some cleanup on the districts and still keep that flexibility in place. Okay. One second. Okay. So the new districts that we're recommending, first off is Community Facilities. And so the purpose of this district is to start with public civic, educational, institutional, or cultural uses, and those are all defined in the regulations. I think it's easy to think about this in terms of, could be schools, could be churches or temples, could be a hospital, or, you know, community college, and allow, in addition to that primary use, allow commercial or residential as accessory uses. So what we're seeing in practice, and this may not be Johnson County's experience, because your level of development is different than a city, because you're a county, but what we're seeing as housing prices inch up, institutions and churches, schools, whoever, places that exist in a campus setting or have extra property, sometimes come in and say, hey, we could put some residential on this property. We could let our people live here, we could let other people live here, this is something we want to explore, because we have the benefit of this property that we own, and it brings the land price down, which makes the housing nominally more affordable. So this would be a district where if you had, you know, a public use or civic use that sat on property, that may be on a campus setting on its own, so it could be like a church with a daycare, or our picture here is a big old coffee shop that's associated with a church. They could also, they could do that coffee shop or the daycare, but they could also do the residential use. The flip side of this is that these uses may be working quite well with a city's special use process. And so this might be a place where And so this might be a place where we're recommending a change, saying, hey, a zoning district could do this. And it would be perfectly fine for you guys to tell us, you know, what we've got going is fine. The other piece that goes with this is all of these uses would still be allowed in other districts. So we're not saying you can only have a church in a community facilities district. You can still have it in a residential district or even in a commercial district. But we're saying if that institution wants to do something that is campus-like on their property and they want to include more commercial or more housing, then we'd prefer they come in for the community facilities zoning because that lets everyone know, hey, this is a campus and it may grow. So that's kind of a consideration to think about in that district. Second new district, Open Space and Parks District. And this is a very specific district that we were recommending and then had conversations with JCPRD. This district would allow Parks and Rec to implement park master plans without coming back through the county for special use or for a review on the site. Once that master plan is in place, if the park is zoned OSP, that means that those uses on the master plan have been approved. So those things go hand in hand. And then they can come through and, and do the development they want to do. So like, I cannot remember which park I got the glamping setup out of, one of the parks master plans. And then we have Heritage Park underneath that. Those would all become uses by right through doing the Open Space and Parks District. Similar to the civic, similar to the Community Facilities District, parks are still allowed in other districts. So you don't have to go through and rezone every park to this. This would be in a circumstance where staff and JCPRD, planning commission and board of county commissioners thought, you know, it would be a good idea to go through with a rezoning on this particular park because of the level of change we see happening over time. Okay, and then I touched on plan development earlier. So this is replacing the planned districts. This is kind of consolidating, coming up with a one-step process to get there. One of the things that we want to talk about in moving to a planned development district, many communities that allow planned development have a requirement that says, we'll, we'll let you do this, but we're giving you something extra. We're allowing you to come in and ask us for changes to the regulations. And what the county would like to see for that is some sort of benefit be provided to the county. So that could be, we see communities ask for, you know, additional open space be dedicated or additional trails connections. So something kind of above and beyond that is beneficial to, you know, the area where it's being developed or the county as a whole. Because what we're saying is we're, we're allowing you some freedom within the regulations. And with that freedom comes some need to give back to the county and give back in terms of design, development and design. So that's a conversation we can have when we have a better idea about making this change from planned districts to one planned development district. The upside of planned development district is that, you know, looking at the big picture, the county can look at environmental conservation, development efficiencies and/or efficient development. That could be energy-wise efficient, design-wise efficient, and then innovative design solutions. So if someone wants to come in and do, you know, an agri-hood or something that you're not seeing in the county that you'd like to see but don't have the regulations in place for, this is the way to get to that development. Okay, so we have a list of district consolidations. And our next step, when, when we have this list in place and we've put it out for discussion, is to start looking at the zoning map. So a couple of things that you'll hear me saying at least 57 times through this process. The goal with this process is to convert the existing districts to the new districts. It is not to rezone. So we want to stay as close as possible from existing to new. That's one of the reasons we track what districts are being rolled together into the consolidated districts. And then we start putting together a conversion zoning map. This is a reflection of change of policy in the county. So change being the rural comprehensive plan being implemented. And the changes to the map are reflection of that policy. So that's why we're not doing individual rezonings. We are also not touching any city zoning. That is up to the cities to do. So we are only in the unincorporated part of the county. We are not in the cities and we're not rezoning. People will ask for rezonings. We may end up having a conversation about specific rezonings. When we start into a process like this, we usually find properties that aren't zoned to match their policy area type in the plan. And so that's a conversation we'll have with county legal. We'll probably have it with you and we'll have it with the board of county commissioners to let you know how that goes. That conversation will probably be later in the process. But we are going to start working on a conversion map because this is a really good way to help property owners and residents in the county visualize the changes that come through the zoning code update. So more on that as we get it going. And this map will be available on the website after we've finished it, brought it to you for discussion and the advisory group for discussion. Getting into the use regulations, this will go just a little faster here. Everyone knows what the use regulations are. So same process, identifying and consolidating. The current code has a single use table in the appendix, but it also has lists of uses in each district. We are recommending that the county move to the one table and eliminate the list of uses. Having both is just ripe for conflicts if it gets added to one and not the other. And the table is easier to read and compare. We, we know from our work across communities that two things applicants want to know. They want to know what the standards are in their zoning district and they want to know what uses are allowed in their district. Or they want to know where they can do the use they want to do. So having the use table set up like this is really helpful. And so as we've been cleaning up the use table, we have spent a great deal of time with staff and we're grateful for that, going through the, the relevance of each use and the permission that a property owner needs to get approval for the use. So is it a by right use? Is it a special use? And the question we ask is, do we need to have extra review for uses when we can put standards in the regulations that are clear and then that use can be approved administratively? So we want to get to a place where applicants can move through the process as efficiently as possible at a, as low a cost and time commitment to the applicant as possible when we can make the regulations work that way. When we can't make the regulations work that way, then we leave it to higher levels of review. We've gone through all the definitions, cleaned them up as needed and established consistent terminology across the code. Sometimes over the years, when we have different drafters, they use different terms and that can become a problem, so we're cleaning that up. So this is a process to make the code more user-friendly and more readily accessible. Okay, so we're looking at this. This is a clip from the use table. So you can see the existing districts in the gray. The new districts are in the white line underneath it. From this clip, we have groupings of residential, recreation, entertainment, retail sales, sexually oriented businesses, and vehicles and equipment. So when we update the use table, we look again for opportunities to consolidate into categories. So, you know, you can see here we have recreation indoor and recreation outdoor. Recreation indoor, I think the executive summary has a list of it included theaters, probably included indoor ice rinks, would have had, you know, pinball places, could have stuff in there from 20 or 30 years ago. If we consolidate it into this category, give examples of what belongs here and give instructions for how new uses are interpreted in. The next time someone comes up with a great new indoor recreation use, it doesn't have to be in the table, it can be properly interpreted into the table. We set that up initially as a director interpretation, always subject to appeal. So, so this list might be a little shorter than what you're used to. We're really not taking uses away, we're just consolidating titles. We want to be broad with the uses that are allowed as appropriate with the district, the location, and the plan that applies to it. So here are the categories of use permissions. So there's permitted, that's what we typically call a by right use. It means that it doesn't need a higher level of approval, planning commissions, zoning board, or board county commissioners. Accessory uses, so these must be accessory to the primary use on the site. Temporary uses, these are temporary in time. So usually something between a week and six months to a year. Sometimes we do extended temporary uses for reasons like, you know, we can do an extended temporary parking lot on a construction site or something along those lines. Conditional uses, so condition, conditional uses are permitted upon approval of a conditional use permit. We are having a discussion that we will come back to planning commission with about converting special permit process into a conditional use permit process. And then if the cell is blank for the use in the district, that means the use is not permitted. For some of the uses, as I talked about a minute ago, we'll have use-specific standards. The current code has some use-specific standards in it. We are carrying those forward and cleaning them up. Uses change over time, the impacts of uses change over time. And we want to make sure that the code is current going forward. This is, the uses and the use-specific standards, we tell everybody at this point in the project, this is iterative, or it is something that we will be doing again and again. We have no thought that we're going to get uses right the first time around because as we add more standards, the parking standards or we add the lighting or the landscaping standards, then we think, oh, wait. What did we mean when we allowed this use in this district? So we circle back. So we'll look forward to your first round comments on this. We'll ask you to comment again when you have the full set of regulations in front of you. We've centralized the use-specific standards. Some of them were in different places in the code. We try to put like with like so people can find things they're looking for. We've edited and updated as needed. We've added new standards as needed. And I have to say, it should be editing and adding because this is the place where we're working with staff right now to understand what approvals have gone through, what the code needs to say, and what future regulations should look like. And then the last thing we do is we go back and we evaluate the uses in the table to see if there's anything we can move from conditional or special review into by right with the right standards. So here are some examples of uses that may have new or updated use-specific standards when you look at the regulations. Ag processing, live-work units where you live and work. That is self-explanatory, but it's actually a single unit. So part of it is cordoned off for work, which is usually more than a home office. It is, you have a small business going there. And then you can live elsewhere in the structure. And minor vehicle repair are a few of those. So you'll see these new or updated use-specific standards when the draft comes through. So finally, last thing I want to talk about, measurements and definitions. This is often overlooked, part of the code. This is where I know people who are my people and are complete code geeks because this is one of the places they focus on. We want to make sure that we provide explicit instructions for how the county measures distances or height or the sign face or whatever it is we're measuring. Because we don't want to have an applicant believing one thing and a staff member believing another thing and find ourselves in a place of going back and forth on that when really a set of measurement regulations would have gotten everyone to the same place. Secondly, we do the same with definitions. This is about setting expectations. The definitions need to match how the use or other item works in Johnson County. So that's part of the update we've been doing. And then making sure that we use those defined terms consistently. This improves readability and accessibility for users. And it standardizes that understanding. So that's what you'll be looking for as the draft comes through. I think it's about 130, 140 pages. So take your time, maybe set aside a few sessions to read it. We will also create an executive, we, I'm sorry, we will create a recorded PowerPoint of the whole thing. So if you want to like take it out on your dog walk and listen to it before you dive in. It's a reference document, don't feel like you have to read it like a book. So you can jump into the stuff that you're most curious about and then you can move around as you need to find information. What will we do next? As soon as we finish our work with staff over the next probably week or two, we'll get that draft posted for review like we did with the code assessment. It'll be online and it'll be on Conveo, which is the software that we use that allows people to leave specific comments in the draft where everyone can see it. We will provide, Clarion and Olson will provide staff with a draft of Module 2. So those are those development standards, so we'll start working on that. We will also start some really kind of high-level summer outreach. We want to let people know about the project. So this will be very educational in nature. But we never anticipate a lot of deep questions early on. The deeper questions we get early on are from people who have to work with the regulations. But we do want to spend some time going out and talking to Rotary or Farm Bureau or Realtors and tell them what's going on. So we'll have a PowerPoint ready for that and we'll have speakers ready. So whoever wants to schedule a meeting, a lunch meeting, whatever, to talk about it, we'll make that information available, one of us will go speak. We will also put up some project boards, so some visual information from the regulations here in the county offices when that's appropriate. And we'll have that linked to likely a QR code and a hard copy version of the draft. So whoever wants to access it in the way they want to look at it, we'll make that available. And then we'll have the draft on the project website. As we go through Module 1 and Module 2, we'll do a little of this for Module 1, a little for Module 2. We won't do a lot of outreach on Module 3 because sadly, no one wants to talk about process with us. Except county attorney's office loves to talk about process with us. But as we finish and get the whole draft together, that's when we put more effort, more oomph into the engagement. And we really try to sit down with people and talk about what does it mean to make these changes? How does it affect the county? How does it affect you? And we dive a little deeper into that process. So I think that is it. Happily, if you have questions, you can contact Sean. But I'm here this evening, so happy to answer questions.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions at this stage?
I have some questions, clarifications. This is Kelly Grass. Okay, so a couple of questions. When you, when we engage the public, when it comes to public time, because I think this is one thing from being on the planning commission and the zoning board for the last two or three years, we've had a few large issues when they come in. And a lot of time, the public feels like they're last to be involved.
Yeah.
Like, all of this is already done. And I understand why it's kind of done this way because it's got to get done, there's got to be something. But how, if you get public comments where people are like, just really concerned about certain things or whatever, how do you make them feel like they have a voice, it's valued? Do you go back to the, you know, versus we're at a big public event and they're heard and then they walk away and nothing's kind of done?
Yeah, you get your three minutes and thank you very much.
Yeah, so what, what will be, when we keep talking about public engagement? Can you give an example of like how you actually engage with them?
Yeah, so we try a wide range of things. So first off, we, we put up a big schedule and we invite people and we say, you can come to any of this and here's what we'll be talking about. We also, before we put the regulations out, either hard copy or on the website, we put questions in the regulations to let people know we're not finished and that we have issues that we really need to hear from the community about. And it starts slow. But usually by the time we have the whole thing together, we have one or two groups that really want to talk about something. We do anticipate that, that it really builds at the end. And so that's when, in other codes, we've, you know, set aside, you know, four or five days with three or four meetings apiece. So come meet us at a coffee shop or come walk this site with us and, you know, do a walk with a planner and we'll talk to you about what the changes might look like. We also see people coalesce around issues as we get closer to the end of the project, as we get closer to adoption. And so usually, we do specific meetings with those. so usually, we do specific meetings with those groups. And we sit down and have enough time to let everybody weigh in on what they want to weigh in on. We try to be cautious, and tell people simply because they've organized into a group and they don't like something doesn't always mean we're changing the code. That's one of the hardest parts of this. I think, you know, people feel like we've organized, we have, you know, 15 people here, this is meaningful, change it. And we try to spend time talking about what got us to this place. That's why we point at the plans fairly often. Okay, these, you know, represent the county. So when we get to the place where we go on the more extensive engagement, we'll try to kind of flood the zone, and say, okay, we're doing the coffee shop meetings, we're doing brown bag lunches, we've put stuff on the website, we'll do virtual meetings on the website. We can do a half day or a full day. Come in and draw on the maps with us, which engages people in a little different way and gets them to start talking. In some communities, we've also done, you know, some, we're going to be out in this part of the county, and we'll have it set up usually with food, and, you know, some sort of beverage for everybody, and it'll be an open house. Come on, drop in. We have, you know, boards and images about the project. That's our starting point. As we learn more about who wants to engage more deeply, we have conversations about like, okay, how can we talk to you? What is the best way to do this? Do you need to meet first and then talk to us about it? Do we need to have staff come listen to you and talk to us about it? Ultimately, it comes down to communication, which is where you started this question. And so it's our job to figure out where that communication needs to happen and go there. One of the other things we'll do as we get closer to adoption is work with you as a platform in the community, and we'll start kind of a slow roll on a couple chapters at a time, and say, planning commission is reviewing these two chapters. Do you want to come talk about it? Planning commission is reviewing these two chapters. Do you want to come talk about it? So we try to make it not with the kind of higher level of energy as adoption, but sort of a, this is going to be more about what's going on in here. What concerns do we have about it? So that is my non exhaustive list. And then we come back to you and to staff, and we say, what else has worked in Johnson County that we haven't put on our list?
Okay, thank you for that. So, but is it fair, from everything I've heard, it seems like it's a little bit more where we're, where Clarion, with the help of staff and whatever, is presenting this. And it's more of trying to get the residents, the community on board with how they're thinking, how it's been, how it's come about. I guess my question is, if people have concerns.
Yeah.
Can things be changed along the way versus just basically saying, well, this is why we've gotten to how we are? And, because I do agree, I mean, obviously, just because you don't agree with something, it doesn't mean it's going to be changed.
Yeah.
But I do feel like sometimes the residents get sort of the sleight of hand sometimes. And there are different ways to look at it. You can have your glasses on from the county growth standpoint, and then the residents who want to live in a certain community. So it's always a little give and take, but I'm just wondering if it-
Totally right.
Yeah. I mean, it does need to be a little bit more, the residents feel like they can come in, and it's still an open dialogue. There's still the possibility of change, but I'm not sure if that's being communicated well. And I would just probably, my humble advice is make the residents feel like it's not signed, sealed, and delivered, and we'll explain it to the best we can, so hopefully you'll be happy.
Yeah.
That they still get some sort of voice, because I do feel like the, most of the residents, whether it's going, even me, when I go to Overland Park city council meetings or whatever, because of stuff that is encroaching on my area, it doesn't really seem like, doesn't matter who shows up, what we say, nothing's going to be changed or heard. So I just, with going through this process, I'm going to go ahead and let you know, I'm going to be one of those that hopefully, we really do respect the residents and what they have to say. And if it's reasonable changes or assertions to give them a voice, I really feel like that could go a long way.
I think-
Especially with the unincorporated, the county, we're not a city. It is very different mindsets, and there's a lot of people that really love, you know, the rural area we live in. So with that, that's just kind of my humble advice. My second question is, obviously, there's a lot to dig in and digest with everything you said, which was a great presentation. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
But it does seem like there's a lot, and I could be wrong, but this is just my takeaway from it. There's a lot that's being kind of presented more in the way of a lot of flexibility, a lot of open-ended. When this all gets said and done, is there going to be some sort of concrete, hard and fast of what's allowed, what's not? Because that's what kind of happens when we do get things in front of the zoning board, like a private sports academy that wants to, that's very commercial, probably six, you know, six-figure business, but they're wanting to prop up right next to residential.
Yeah.
And those are the things that are difficult. And then it becomes, well, who gets to say whether this is right or not? And it seems like we're getting more open-ended, which as a zoning board person, gets harder to say, we can't not approve it, because all the codes are sort of open-ended, and there's nothing that we can say, this does not fit.
Yeah, that's-
Am I hearing this kind of, I mean, this is how, some of this stuff is being sort of more changed, and more flexible, and more open-ended. So I'm sort of seeing how it's not really giving definitions to some of the problems we've already run into in the past. It's kind of making it more open-ended, which then I'm like, I don't see how the zoning board can support residents if there's nothing to sort of lean into and say, this isn't right, if there's always that open back door.
Yeah, no, we don't want to, we don't want to pull the floor out from underneath you. That's not the goal. So it's a good question, and it's complex. We want to put you in a position to be able to easily approve the things that are appropriate in the area where they're being recommended. And so where we want to do that, and kind of the, you know, more flexibility where we want to do that is make it easier for things to go through administrative approval, possibly make it easier to have some minor adjustments, and that's something that you'll see in the procedure section. But not, not and never the everything goes piece of it. So I think, I, I hear your question in my head, based on my experience, which is not on the ground in Johnson County. I think this code will leave you in a good place to do the right development, but I would love to hear the specific examples from you, just like you were saying, like, okay, what happens if somebody proposes this? That's how we get to making sure that the code works the way it does, and it's kind of testing the code. So as you're reviewing it, if you're like, well, I line these three things up, and that means this development goes in and people lose their minds. So it's not the outcome we're looking for, ever. So that would be a situation where we would appreciate your comments of, you know, hey, can you tighten this up? Or can you make sure people can do this as long as they're, you know, more than 500 feet away from residential? So it, it should be more flexible in a way that makes it easier to get to development on a specific site, which is usually where we run into flexibility problems. It shouldn't be allowing uses that are inappropriate. And that is feedback. We'd love to hear from you. I have a concern, or what were you guys thinking when you put these words in here? Anyway, you want to say it, it's fine. I had a boss that used to put awkward next to everything, and I was like, okay, whatever. So, so that's where your wisdom and your experience, everyone on the planning commission would help the code. So we'd look to hear that from you. I think it'll work. But test it, see if you're happy with what it's doing.
Yeah, thanks, Elizabeth. I was gonna, Sean Penley County Planning Staff, I was gonna add to that, too, to answer Kelly's specific question on uses. At this point, of course, it's an overview of what Elizabeth has shared this evening. There are going to be a lot more detailed use specific standards that we are going to be recommending, and Clarion has already put together some of that, and staff, that's part of why staff is still editing some of that. We understand there are definitely some specific uses that have had some concerns from the public. So we want to ratchet those down and have development standards that would go with a specific use, like a recreational use, whether indoor or outdoor. There need to be some set of use standards that would apply to make it appropriate for the size that's allowed, setbacks that are required, whatever it is. We recognize that, and we will have that in the draft. But if there are concerns with that from the public, or the planning commission or advisory committee, we absolutely will take that feedback and make adjustments where needed. So we understand that. That's some of the details yet that we haven't been able to present yet, but we absolutely plan to do that.
Is that, Kelly Rass, this is what you're saying would come in module two, or still with module one, these things?
This would be in module one, the use specific standards, they just haven't been, we haven't presented those specific standards yet. We're still reviewing all of those, because there are a lot. There's a lot of uses with a lot of different standards. We're still reviewing that and sending comments back to Clarion. We haven't presented any of that yet.
Okay.
But it'll still, so module one is not yet complete. We're still providing comments on that.
And Kelly Rass, when do you, when would that be complete in correlation to when public has opportunity? And I'm on the advisory committee, so I'll be there tomorrow, and I'm also on the zoning board. But like, just so everybody gets the information, has all the information, so that people don't feel like, oh, this was thrown in later, and, you know, or for one purpose or another. When will all that information actually be presented in full and in its entirety, so people know exactly what they're looking at?
So for module one, I think we're probably a couple weeks out, realistically. So that's the first take on that. We try to not edit that after it goes out the first time, because it gets confusing to people. But we're taking in comments the whole time. We'll do module two and module three, and then we'll pull the whole thing together and make all the edits that we've all agreed to along the way. So then that, the full draft comes out, and it is updated.
Well, is it possible for the planning commission, well, even the advisory board, planning commissioner, zoning boards, have opportunities to look at module one when it's complete, and offer edits at that point before it's way down the road after modules one, two, and three are complete? That seemed like that would be the first, especially if the contentious details are the ones that are being held back right now, and y'all are still working on, and we haven't seen those. And then you're saying that, or at least, you know, unless I heard it wrong, that that's still not going to be seen until after module two and three are done? Can we not, the really, because this was brought up at the very first thing at the advisory committee meeting, is that these are the things we want to know. We want to really nail them down. We want to look at it. We want to see where they're, you know, which direction. We really advise Clarion representatives to go in and take a look at our little niche, you know, communities, and not look at it as a city. And these were the things that were brought up, you know, at the, well, I think it was maybe October or November meeting. But, and so I'm kind of hearing that those are still being held back, held back, held back. And those are the ones, that's the stuff we want to see upfront, so.
I think that the discussion we've had around this is, it becomes an open record issue. So if we share it with planning commission, it's a public document.
And is there a problem with that?
Well, it means everyone can comment on it at the same time. We have done this and said, okay, here's the draft. Now sit still for a month, because we're giving advisory committee, planning commission, and, you know, board county commissioners or zoning board time to look at it. There will be edits. That's fine, and that's at your discretion. Sometimes that's a little confusing to the public, and sometimes, honestly, nobody is paying attention. So I think that whichever approach that we come up with is fine. It, you know, it means that we could get comments from the public, and we'll just let them know there's going to be another round coming.
Yeah. Kelly Rass, I'm, my vote is for full transparency. Let the public know what we're thinking, especially on the contentious issues, examples that have already been in front of the board that we're going to be bringing up, the ones that you guys are saying that you're working on the details because they are a little more difficult. Those are the ones that need to be transparent, and they need to be transparent from the get-go. That's where the public always feels like things are already done, and they don't have a voice. So my vote is transparency, transparency, transparency.
One thing I do want to add to, although I think it's, it definitely can be a longer process if we were to present it, where we're bringing each module for public review, we definitely will accept public comments at any time. So once we've posted the draft modules, I think we haven't worked out the final details for the presentation yet in that public engagement process. But my understanding was, when we have the modules ready, as we would, working with the consultant, have our draft module ready, it could be posted online, and then we could start getting comments. We're, we're tracking all of that. We're not losing any of that. Just when we get into discussions, we would have multiple meetings if we were to have a meeting on each module. So that's what we still need to work out. We're not holding anything back. We're not trying to not resent, we just haven't even done a full review of staff. So we're trying to still work through all of that. So, but we absolutely do intend to track and receive all public comments. And the edits, the timing may be the question of when we're making those edits. That's the, that's the only question.
This is Fred Starett. You just wonder how to get them plugged in before it comes out, like a final document, is that?
Kelly Rass, a little bit of both. The timing makes sense so the public can follow, because it is a lot of information. I know the public is going to be more, they're not going to know all the zoning codes and all this stuff. Some of this is even beyond, you know, this isn't what I do on a daily basis. So I'd have to go back and research quite a lot of it to understand it. But I know the public is going to be, depending where they live, they're going to be interested in certain things that have already taken place in front of zoning boards or whatever. So they want to know how those are going to play out in the future. And I think that's where we need to be upfront, and we need to, you know, from a public standpoint, give them examples, like, you know, these type of entities, this is how they're going to be done, especially when we're reached, we're changing language, or verbiage, or whatever. You know, utilize that, too, that, you know, you know, and we can't be afraid to bring up the contentious things, like the sports complexes that are going, you know, on large lots next to residential, that we say, this is an example, so this is now going to be defined as this. It will be allowed here. And I just want to, I just feel like we should just be upfront about it, let the public know, something they can relate to, that they've already been through, because we've had several of them, and several meetings that have been remanded back to the zoning board. So let's just handle these type of situations, and give the examples, so the public can follow without having to do a full course on rezoning, and then know the new language. Just let them know how some of this stuff is going to play out.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of comments. Jay Leipzig, just addressing to Commissioner Rass's comments as well. I would say, you know, in this case, we, there's a lot of subtleties to the various modules and how they fit together. And I think it's very important that we look at it holistically, but also, I mean, I certainly am a huge proponent of transparency as well. We need to be absolutely transparent with the public as we move forward. I think there's a lot of opportunities to see, see the document, to view it, but also look at the modules and how they fit together, I think is important. We have to use our consultants' expertise in doing this of, you know, in communities throughout the country, in terms of the best way to present the information, to make sure that the edits get incorporated as they're supposed to. But at the same time, to talk through the issues with staff, to make sure that we have all of the various components in place for the, for the regulations. But at the same time, there's, there's plenty of opportunities for the public to comment. I don't want to think we're, we're baking the cake, so to speak, without the public having a chance to look at it, because the modules, the draft of those, but it's so important of how they fit together, in terms of the use tables, and how the various conditions, and when they're used. That's the piece that, that really is important, I think, is to look at it somewhat holistically. The other response I would have in terms of, you know, some of the uses that, like, if, if you believe, or if they're inappropriate in certain places of the community, that really comes down to the zoning district. And we need to make sure that the zoning districts are correct, and they're placed in the right areas. And I think that's really the focus of this first module, is creating those zoning districts that we, we can capture. It's the balance between development. What also articulates or provides a strategy for the conference of plan for the particular area of the, of the county that we're talking about, and there's a balance there. But I think having the correct zoning districts in place is the first step, and not retrofitting something, you know, that may not be appropriate, or trying to make it, make a certain use fit in a certain district. That, that is critically important, too. But there will be plenty of opportunities for the public to comment on this, and as well as the planning commission. But looking at those different pieces holistically, I think is very important.
Mr. Fred Starett, I assume someone's keeping track of areas we know that may be contentious. I mean, you, obviously, Kelly, you have some things you're aware of.
Well, I mean, Kelly Rass, even since, like, I've been on the planning commission and zoning boards- Well, I mean, Kelly Rass, even since like I've been on the planning commission and zoning boards, the, just what you mentioned, Jay, that's been something that we have wanted to discuss for like three years now. Defined, define the, what's allowed and what zone. And then it's, you know, it kind of got, that was something even last year that we brought up as, as a planning commission for the year of 2024 was to do that. Then it was like, okay, well, we're going to be doing the subdivision regulations. So that's going to be the time that we do this. So I've been on here three years and I'm just going to say it seems like it's getting kicked down the can, you know, kicking, the can's getting kicked down the road a little bit. And we still haven't defined it. But in the meantime, we're having stuff in front of the board. Certain things are happening. And it's just, you know, for three years being on this board, that's been, that, defining what should go in what zone has been one of the biggest issues. And people on both boards that I've been a part of, I mean, this is a pretty much a new board, but before it was totally new. That's what was, everybody's main focus was starting 2024 to deal with that. It never got dealt with because, you know, they kept saying, you know, about this subdivision thing, that's when it was going to be taken care of. But in the meantime, different things took place. So again, if this is the time to handle it, and it's been something that for three years, board members have been wanting to really do, based on things that have happened, based on hearing residents, based on what we've dealt with, it really needs to be outlined, you know, to the nth degree. And I'm just, I, I know you're saying there's lots of, not everybody's going to go on the Johnson County website and just say, hey, what's going on on the county website? They're pretty busy people. I, you know, but, and I hear all the things y'all are doing to try and communicate everything with the public and stuff. But this is where I'm saying, we just need to put, put it out with a big red flag of saying, this is how it's going to go. These are the, you know, and let them know where things are going to fall on the difficult areas. And, you know, at least give them the heads up if it's not going to change or it's going to be broader. It's better than, you know, let them, let them know.
Yes, Commissioner Rass, that's, that is part of our, our plan certainly is to do that. I mean, generally, when these things are, are brought forward, you'll look at the, just, just a matrix table, a summary matrix table that says, you know, basically highlights what the existing code says. This is what the new code says. And so you can see it because, yeah, by the time, you know, we start reviewing it, it could be 300 pages. So you obviously want to condense that down. So you have a, just narrowly focus on what those changes are. But yeah, I, your point is, is well taken. I mean, that's, we certainly need to, I hope, that's where I think the consultant could help us and staff in terms of narrowing down what the changes are and presenting it probably in the most effective way. Some other ideas that were just mentioned, I like the idea of creative public participation where, you know, maybe we go in different parts of the county to have a, to have a meeting, like a pop-up meeting or something like that. I think would be great to do more of those things.
Yeah, Kelly Rass, I'm sure Ken would be glad to set up a still little community meeting. So I can bring that up with him.
Points are well taken.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
This is Fred Starett again. Just so I understand the process, I, is this like other things that I've seen? Since I haven't seen this exactly, this is a, I assume we're talking about this here because we ultimately will be the body that represents, or that recommends this to the county commissioners, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
And, and we're really lucky to have Kelly here and perhaps we have others because she's giving us input today from the board, zoning boards. How do they fit in this? And I didn't hear if I heard if that was, I maybe missed it.
Zoning boards?
Yes.
Yeah. Good question, yeah.
In terms of creating this document that's ultimately going to be recommended to the county commissioners.
Yeah, good question. So the zoning boards, we are going to be bringing updates to the zoning boards as we get draft information ready. In addition, we do have representatives from the zoning boards, such as Commissioner Rass, that also serve on the zoning board and advisory committee. That goes for both east and west zoning boards. But we do have representatives from both of those zoning boards. But we will provide updates to the zoning boards so they're aware of it. Their role, of course, the function of the zoning boards is to consider the actual land use applications. They don't recommend changes to the regulations or the policies of the comprehensive plan. But they are certainly the, the body that implements those regulations. So they need to be aware of it. And we do want to bring them in on that as we do provide updates to the boards.
Thank you.
Craig Connell, I have a question, maybe to follow up a little bit what you said, Jay. Will it be obvious to us, how obvious will it be to us that something has changed either from your recommendations or Clarion's recommendations in the draft from what was before? A couple of examples, I'll just throw them out. Setback requirement or a spacing between driveways or things like that. You know, will that be obvious to us when we review it and said, oh, this is something that changed? And we can kind of dig into it if we need to.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Good question. And I, I think a lot of that is dependent upon the either memorandum or the presentation of when that's made to you. But as an example, you know, we brought up tonight having the, the Lake District. You know, you're familiar with, with some of the properties around Gardner Lake. It's always been an issue. We have to go before the, the Board of Zoning, Zoning Appeals. Having that district in place will, will be a huge help in terms of why that, why that is necessary. And that, that's just one anecdotal caveat, you know, as we go through. But I think a lot of the, those type of things in that, in that memorandum or the communication PowerPoint, whatever it is, that's, that's a great way to base it. That way we kind of look, think about it from a practical example. You know, so you've got that in your, a particular case in your head first, and then we start looking at the, at the zoning regulation. So that answers your question. I think it'll be our goal is to make it as clear as possible with, with a, with an example of something that the zoning boards or planning commission has had to wrestle with in the past. So there's some kind of relevancy there that you can base it on.
Yeah, Craig Connell again. So, yeah, let Kelly, I'm on, I'm on the West zoning board and she's on the East. And so there's specific things that I'm going to be looking for when I do the review as well, things that have been sticking blocks on previous application to the zoning board. So I'll be looking for that.
Yeah, good, it's a good question. I'll add just one more thing to that. And I know Elizabeth probably can add some details to help explain this. Although this is a whole new document, so it is harder than say, like, a document where you're going to see red line changes. We're doing a completely new document. We are carrying forward a lot of the same standards that are already adopted. We're recommending continuing the same standards. But for the major changes, we'll definitely continue to highlight those. I think that's why Clarion will help with this. We'll try to emphasize some of those major changes. And hopefully it will be simpler, you know? Hopefully we'll see some of these things are a little bit easier to see just in that table like Elizabeth showed with the, the use table, with the dimensional standards table. You can see it, a quick reference, hopefully it'll be a little bit easier to see those changes. But maybe if Elizabeth has any other examples to share with that, to show how it's going to be different.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much, Elizabeth. Look forward to working with you on down the road. Next thing I have on the agenda is Fred Starett. They're asking for feedback. I think everybody should have gotten a planning commission post-training survey. I guess you'd like those back. You want those tonight or?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Jay Leipzig, if, if possible, if you could complete it tonight, that would be great if you haven't done so already. But if you, if you do need some more time, that's fine too. But if, just wanted to point that out to you so we could get your feedback in terms of future training sessions. I think, as I mentioned before, we, we, we used to have just one training session a year, and it was kind of a long evening. And so last year, we, we broke that up into a series of topics, four different topics. And I think that format seems to work very well, at least so far what we, what I've heard. But we just want to get your comments on that in terms of the topic, how, how effective it was for you, if you, if you like that format. And that will help us develop future training topics for next year as well. So, but yeah, if you can complete it tonight, that would be great. If you do need some more time, that's just as a reminder to, to complete it for us, if you would please.
All right. Thank you, Fred Starett again. I think if there isn't anything else on that, on the survey, the next thing on the agenda is the director's report, Jay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, Jay Leipzig again. The Board of County Commissioners actions on your dais or in your packet this evening is the, the applications reviewed by the B O C C from January 1st through May 1st, 2025. Y'all should have a copy of that. Just to keep it brief, if you do have questions about that, please reach out to me. But it does give you a history of both zoning boards of what, what was the particular cases that were discussed by the, by the B O C C. So you have that as a reference. And then, as you might recall, that is what we use when we prepare our annual review, which we just approved at our previous meeting in February. But you'll look at this, this report in a chronological order that will tell you exactly what was presented before the zoning boards in the planning commission that, that previous year. The next item for you is the, the advisory committee meeting is scheduled for tomorrow. That's from two to four in the afternoon. And we will have, I'm sure, a very deep discussion tomorrow. Looking forward to that as we get into some of the, some of the details on the, the zoning and subdivision regulations. Future agenda items, we have several coming up at our June meeting, which is June 24th. According to our bylaws, that is the annual election of officers. So currently we have Lindsay Crusay as our chair, Fred Starett is our vice chair. And so we'll be taking nominations for the chair and the vice chair at our June 24th meeting. Also on that agenda is our comprehensive plan annual review. And that's also as noted in, in the bylaws. And then, so June 24th, also we'll be providing an update on the Southwest Metro Johnson County Transportation Connection Plan. They, there's been a series of discussions about that. Well, there's an open house on June the 11th that Public Works is, is sponsoring. Johnson County Public Works is sponsoring at the, the Senior Center in De Soto. And that's June the 11th from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. And that will be an open house type of meeting where you can just drop in, look at the display boards and the information and the public can become more informed. We'll have a more formal presentation on that item at our planning commission meeting in June, on June 24th. So we're looking forward to that. That'll be a fairly full agenda that, that evening as we, we go through those items. The next thing also on June the 11th, at that same date, we're having a Board of Zoning Appeals training. This is a, a special training session for that group. As you know, the Board of Zoning Appeals is kind of a very specific review process for those, for reviewing those cases. And we have a training for that particular group on that, that evening on the 11th. The, going back to the Transportation Connection Plan and our meeting in June will be a high level presentation for the planning commission. And then they are looking at having a, a, we're, we're looking at having a public hearing before the planning commission for this body in September with formal recommendations from their consultant that they had utilized for that, for that document. And then those, those changes and those recommendations will be hopefully incorporated into our zoning and subdivision regulations as well. So everything is kind of falling into place there. But we'll, we could talk about that in more detail, but at our introductory meeting during June. But we'll likely, hopefully have a, a hearing on that item on September 23rd for the planning commission. With that, Chairman, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Next item is old business and new business. Is there any old business anyone is aware of? No, seen none. We'll move on. Any new business, anything you want to add to what we've done or talked about here today? Right? I would entertain a motion to adjourn then.
This is Greg Wolf, so moved.
Craig Connell, I second that.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Guess we're done. Thank you all.
Thanks.